Hmm?
It'd be a bad time to own a golf course.
Yeah.
My son filled out the pond, three thousand dollars run well dedicated for the lake. Just so that's not including water.
How's the employee doing?
Okay, we're gonna get going this evening. If you do, can get a chance, think about speaking into the mic. I know sometimes probably the biggest victim talking on side of my mouth. And I know we've had people that haven't been able to hear us. So just a little housekeeping detail. Let's start with the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden? Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Here.
Chairman Bohm?
Here.
Additions, deletions, changes, saying none. Can I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five.
Oh, you got a roll call yet? Yeah. Okay. Oh, that's right, jeez. I'm sorry, Jeff.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve and file the minutes of the six sixteen twenty-two commission meeting and the seven seven twenty-two standing committee meetings.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. No proclamations. Item seven, the consent agendas, items A through I.
This time I move to approve item seven A through seven I on the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion on any of these items. Saying none. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Reports of standing and special committees. I'll start with Commissioner Vandabosh.
We staked out all the locations for the weather warning sirens this week. So hopefully we can start installation shortly. That's about all I got.
Okay. Commissioner Rushing?
Nothing this week.
Commissioner Dunn?
Goodell's Park, the new playscape area has been completed and open in time for the fair this week. That's all I have.
Commissioner McConnell?
It's open and it's being very well used. They were very busy. It looks very nice. I got a call from Justin from emergency management and he was telling me that last Sunday they had a call from Grant Township. They had someone on a three wheeler, four wheeler, something that got lost in the state game area or at least didn't come back. And the fire department was out looking, weren't having any luck. They got ahold of emergency management and they took out their new drone with the heat seeker on it and they were able to locate a person. And Coast Guard lifted him out and it was very successful. He said it was a long night. It was from ten o'clock till four thirty in the morning, but they found the gentleman and were able to get him out. So.
Wow.
He said, we buy these items and they practice with them and they finally, you know, I mean, you wish you never used them, but when you get a situation and they feel that, you know, it was a life-saving event. So.
What happened to the guy, Greg?
He got supposedly there's some type of an area, went across the river and trying to come back. I don't know if it got too deep and that four wheeler tipped over and came on him and he was able to crawl back on the one side, but couldn't get across the river because he had an injury. So obviously he didn't have a cellphone or if he did, it was in an area where it wasn't working. So but the detection of the heat picked him up. So it's pretty neat. That's it.
Georgia? So had a meeting the other day with one of the companies looking to do solar in St. Clair County. We are going to be seeing, I think, a lot of these companies are going to be showing up in St. Clair County looking for this. Windmills, I think, is pretty well the dead horse. I know some of the different townships are looking at solar. They sent me a copy of the resolution, backup, not resolution, but like ordinances. And I sent it to Dave Struck. I think it would probably behoove us if the county were to start to work with some of the local townships on some of these solar ordinances, something, because they're gonna need some help, I think, when it comes time and, you know, to do these things. And I think this is like the fourth company that's contacted me. And as many of you know, if not all of you know, we have the ITC transmission line that comes out of the thumb that cuts through St. Clair County. So they're looking for large tracts of land that have proximity to the, you know, transmission line. And I think doing something similar to what we did previous with the townships are kind of are you in or are you out? You know, because a lot of times, too, you can make these ordinances so restrictive, right, that you just won't get solar installations. And these are, these are large opportunities for St. Clair County. I had Justin Sears run some taxing information before and, you know, these things are a hundred million dollar type of investments and stuff. So could be a really good opportunity for some of our more rural communities that really don't see that kind of investment. So I kinda got, passed it off to Dave and I got Dave doing some work on it. So other than that, that is it for me. So I'm gonna move to citizens wishing to address the board. Got Geneva Bivens. Me slash B O H. Oh, okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Geneva Bivens. I live in Port Huron. Yesterday I attended the Board of Health meeting. Overall, the meeting was informative and I'm glad I attended. I learned that there's an issue with the Board of Health getting the information that they need from the ME's office and it's been a subject of discussion at every meeting for quite some time. Members of the board stated that they have not received an ME's report for several years despite having paid for everything that the ME's office needed to provide those reports. Commissioner Beeden informed the board that she had spoken with Carrie Hepping about it. The 2021 ME's report was being reviewed and they should have it soon. While it's great that they should have the 2021 report soon, what about all of the prior year's reports that they haven't received? On the current ME's contract, it states on page two, item C subsection J, maintain detailed records of all cases, coordinate with delivery of said data to the health department as requested. Perhaps the as requested needs to state exactly what the obligations are for providing those reports, but not limited to what's stated on the contract. So who exactly is the ME's office supposed to coordinate with to make sure that data is delivered? Who's responsible for making sure the Board of Health gets the information they need from the ME's office, excuse me, and other county agencies so they can advise the health director and assist with making sound decisions that benefit the health and well-being of our county? Is it Carrie Hepping, the medical examiner, the health director? Whose responsibility is it? Good decisions are not made when people don't have the information that's required to make good decisions. It seems to me this information is crucial and not providing the information to the Board of Health is a detriment to the health of our community. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to unfinished business. There's no one. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't have a form. Can you?
No, this is a big sign that you're.
Yeah, that's all right. Yep, no problem. No, thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Christie, is it gross?
Grochey.
Grochey.
Grochey. The family in Tennessee would say it's gross, but in Michigan, we say grochey, I guess. It's a married name, so I just follow the rules. My name's Christie Grochey. I'm an executive director with Advisor Care. We are, as a company, going around to Board of Commissioners meetings in different counties and addressing the auto no-fault reform that was changed last July. What happened, we also have been at the Capitol at least, me personally, one day a week, if not three days a week, talking to senators and bringing awareness to it. What happened in the auto no-fault reform, which a lot of people don't know about, is the home healthcare companies that provide services to people that are in their home that were in a catastrophic accident that need someone to care for them 24 hours a day. The auto companies, the insurance companies have slashed the rates by forty-five percent. So now we went from being reimbursed anywhere between twenty-four to twenty-eight dollars an hour to like twelve to sixteen dollars an hour. Many home care agencies in the state of Michigan have closed their doors or are no longer accepting cases, auto cases anymore. We are one of the last few companies that are standing that are trying to provide care to the people that are in their homes. If this continues, we will also have to, you know, not accept any more of those and discharge them, which puts them in nursing homes or their families, the burden on their families to have to quit their jobs and family members to take care of them. We have had about twenty-six, I think twenty-seven counties now pass a resolution just stating they agree that it does need to be looked at. A fix needs to happen for home care agencies because these people are depending on that care in order to just survive. It has been extremely difficult because a lot of people now, even I understand that the companies allow you to choose whether or not you want unlimited PIP on your coverage. What a lot of people don't even understand is if you do choose that and you are in a catastrophic accident, you have selected that on your insurance, but there isn't gonna be a company that takes the case because they're not getting reimbursed in the rate that they can even sustain to pay their caregivers. And it also means that all the people that have been paid into this and were depending on this, didn't have any care in the world, that didn't, one last thing they had to worry about is to have care for themselves, it's now been taken away from them. And they've just been discharged from other companies. We've personally had to discharge some people where we just could not come to an agreement with their insurance companies or there just wasn't a way that we could continue the care because we couldn't keep caregivers at the home. We are just hanging on by a thread. And so we're.
If you could wrap it up, you get three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't, I wasn't looking. Thank you. Thank you for telling me that.
Christie, come see me after and I'm gonna give you my cellphone number and email and I wanted to get some more information.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
If I could, Jeff, on that issue, just for us to talk, if I could talk about a little bit. Carrie, I don't know if you could look into it. You know, I know a little bit about the insurance. You know a lot about the insurance. I don't know what's changed with the law. I don't know if it's just with the reduction that we get to choose as individuals that affects that or is it across the board? Because I would wanna know the finances. If we're gonna potentially look at a resolution, and I read all four resolutions prior to, and if it's a concern that we should address, St. Clair County residents, we should address it. But I'd wanna know the financial of what happened with that legislation before we just arbitrarily sign onto a resolution in support of it or to have them look at new legislation because that's taxes.
Yep.
Indirectly, it's a backdoor tax. If that's the right wording for it, we'd wanna know the finances on it.
Okay, fair enough. The unfinished business, moving into new business. Item eleven A, approval of county disbursements.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the June two thousand twenty-two county disbursements in the amount of thirty million, six hundred and eighty-five dollars, five hundred and fifty, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item B.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Commissioner Baldwin to the A A A one B board as the board commissioner representative.
Support.
At least a previous held that, but there was a quote unquote conflict of interest that there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C.
I would make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two port security grant program application in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the changes to the agreement with airmark, jail, food services, amendment K as presented.
Support.
Discussion. We previously talked about this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item E, the contract approval request.
This time I move to approve the agreement with Phila Gilant Solutions, Motorola Solutions for the purchase of the solar license plate readers for the sheriff's office in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and three dollars and seventy-four cents.
Support.
Discussion. Somebody had a good story the last time about how they found, it was a bad situation, but via through this thing that they actually found.
Yes, a victim out of East China was found in central Ohio, I believe.
Yeah.
Found her within 24 hours, which is.
That's pretty good.
If I could add, and I, same story I told you before, when I went to Pennsylvania and Neil, a guy I golf with, was driving and he was going through the construction zone, didn't get pulled over, it's a toll area. Month later, I get a ticket that he was going twenty-three miles over the speed limit, doing seventy-eight and a fifty-five. And they said, you're fine, you can contest it if you want, but they kinda put me on warning, don't go speeding in Pennsylvania anymore.
These cameras aren't, there's no ticketable offense with them, they're investigative only.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item F.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three residential substance abuse treatment grant, application in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item G.
I would make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two, oop, hang tight. The American Rescue Plan project for District Two to purchase an emergency backup generator for Sandberg Grashett Memorial Home in the amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item H.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan project for District Two for the Community Foundation of St. Clair County in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to complete the remaining gaps in the bridge to Bay Trail system.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item I.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the American Rescue Plan project for District Three for the purchase of air conditioning system for two homes owned by Hunter Hospitality House in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item J.
I would make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan project for exterior renovations at the Port Huron Museum for Grashett Post Hospital in the amount of sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item K.
This time I move to approve the American Rescue Plan project to create a website for the S C C Community Services Coordinating Body, Dimension Alzheimer's Resource Committee in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item L.
Mr. Chair, at this time I'd like to make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan for the purchase of a truck and lawn care equipment for SUNS outreach program in the amount of seventy thousand dollars, eight, seventy thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Actually was talking to Tyrone last night and they have the Harrington School under contract. Was that one of them? They were pretty excited though, because they were trying to build previously, you know, build gymnasiums, all that. It's gonna be one of the other closing schools, so the SUNS is going to be locating there.
Harrison School.
Harrison.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item M.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Rescue Plan project for the purchase of, installation of five flock cameras for the Marine City Police Department in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Support.
Well, discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item N.
Mr. Chair, I would move for the approval of the court manning table change request to reclassify the probate register into a director of internet court operations slash probate register opposition.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item O.
This time I move to adopt resolution twenty dash twenty-two district court building fund establishing a court capital improvement fund for capital and facility needs of the seventy-second district court effective twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-one through twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
P.
I would make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty thousand twenty-two Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program application in the amount of fifteen thousand thirty-five dollars for new crime scene documentation equipment at the sheriff's office.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item twelve, the administrator's report.
I have quite a few things to update you on this evening. The date for our annual actuarial evaluation presentation has been set for August sixteenth at nine thirty. I believe it will be in the Dodge auditorium, but Tammy will be sending out the official notification. U H Y will be here next month at your committee meeting to present the results of our annual two thousand twenty-one audit. Also, we have general fund budget adjustments are in the works and they will be coming to you in September. The deadline for departments to submit projects to our capital improvement program was last week. As of right now, we had eight departments submit twenty-four projects totaling just under thirty-eight million dollars. We do have one department that we're still working with, so we know there's a couple more projects that are going to come in. But the C I P committee will meet in mid-August to go ahead and score out the projects of the public hearing we anticipate will be held in October and then it will come to the Board of Commissioners in November for approval. Last month, we had a citizen come to the board regarding landfill concerns. That information has been passed on to our landfill director and he has been attempting to make contact with her. However, he has not been successful yet, but he is gonna keep trying. We have reached tentative agreements with two of our bargaining units. We are currently in negotiations with fifteen of our units. So if those groups ratify, we will bring those to you in August for your approval. Our search for the permanent medical director is still ongoing. We have had the position posting open for over thirty days and we have received no new qualified applicants. So at this point, we are keeping the position open, but our interim agreement with Dr. Remond is only through the end of August. So we're also going to be reaching out to the state to see what options we may have if we don't have somebody in place September first to hopefully continue with our operations. Our, I have a spongy moth update. We have been working with Friends of the St. Clair River to wrap up their contract that ends this month. Next month, we will be coming to you with several options or proposals on what an ongoing program may look like for this. We will need the Board of Commissioners, however, to make some decisions regarding your level of commitment for future programs because that will impact what our recommendation will be on how the program should look. So we'll be one, asking for decisions regarding if you want this to be a permanent county program, what level of participation the county will have with annual spray or treatment costs if they're needed and just different responsibilities regarding surveying, et cetera. So we have reviewed several options along with the Friends of the St. Clair River potential new contract, along with bringing some of these functions in-house as an option as well. Michigan Association of Counties Conference is September eighteenth through twenty-first and it will be at the Blue Water Convention Center. I know Commissioner Hydeman worked on this for several years with the group prior to leaving as a commissioner and I believe it was delayed a year or two due to COVID. So if anyone is interested, please let me know and I can send you some information regarding that. And that's all I have this evening. And that's all I have this evening.
I am going to add to your last comment. Much of the credit for making this conference happen in Port Huron goes to former Commissioner Howard Hydeman, SMMAC Executive Director Stephen Curry. Whenever he was at a MAC meeting or event, he never failed to lobby for his county and its facilities such as the Blue Water Convention Center. It was in the MAC thing, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get that Howard. Motion to accept the administrator's report.
So will.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Miscellaneous business. Have one item, I went to see the building is gone down to Marine City. Really opened that up, you know, that thing being gone.
Beautiful park.
Yeah, yeah. And then I see the legislature, just the governor signed off on all the approvals. So they will be getting their allocations this fall or whatever. So Marine City's on its way. Item 14.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places and any other information presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjournment.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned.